Opening carakia and anyone is welcome to join with me. Fokatoka tihau kita uru, fokatoka tihau kita tanga. Kia ma kena kena ki uta, kia ma tarata ki tai. Ehi ake ana ti atakura. Keteo teo, ke hoka, ki ho hu, tihai mai ora. So, welcome everyone to today's regulatory processes committee meeting and I will do specific welcome shortly. Please note that the meeting is being livestreamed and welcome to anyone who happens to be watching it right now or watches it at a later stage. Please let me or Democracy Services know if you intend to leave the meeting. So I've received apologies from Mayor Foster and from Deputy Mayor Free, who I don't think has joined us yet for lateness, she will be joining us soon. So I move the motion that we accept the apology from Mayor Foster. Second to please. Councillor Matthews, thank you. I put the motion which has been moved and seconded, please vote accordingly. And I haven't got my little... Right.
I don't see any green ticks.
Getting there. Right, I'm looking at the... Anyway, my hands raised, I think that's probably unanimous. I declare the motion carried. Conflict of interest declarations, I call on members to declare any conflicts of interest they may have in relation to any item on the agenda. Okay, in confirmation of minutes, we... Our last meeting was only seven days ago, so I move that we approve the minutes of that meeting held on the 1st of September, having been circulated, they'd be taken as read and confirmed as accurate record of that meeting. Second to please. Councillor O'Neill, thank you. I put the motion which has been moved and seconded. Please vote accordingly. Right, that is carried, thank you. There are no items not on the agenda. My hand is down. And there is no public participation at this meeting, or no unscheduled public participation. There is no... Just a little, a few words from me at the outset, there is no record of a hearing of this nature and objection to a menacing dog classification in the past 15 years plus, so we're covering new ground. And, but unfortunately, the hearing is on Zoom, I would much prefer it to be in person, but the reality is it's not. So please bear with me if there are a few hiccups along the way, and there may well be. Before we go any further, I will introduce the various participants at this hearing and I will introduce each councillor and perhaps you can give a little wave or whatever at that stage. So the committee, this committee, and this is for Brian Tressider's benefit as much as anyone, comprises councillor Malcolm Spurrie, that's me, Chair, councillor Simon Wolf, Deputy Chair, Deputy Mayor Sarah Free, who will arrive shortly, well, the mayor of course, but he has already put in an apology for absence, councillor Jeanie Conde, councillor Bicker Matthews, councillor Terry O'Neill, and Mana Finua representative Liz Kelly. So it's good to have you all along. And on the public health side and animal control side, could you please introduce yourselves? So I'll leave it to you to individually introduce yourselves right now, please. And we can't hear anything yet.
Good afternoon councillors, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, I've got afternoon, Mr. Tressider. My name's Helen Jones and I'm the Public Health Manager at Wellington City Council, that's me.
Good afternoon, I'm Jude Austin, I'm the team leader in the Public Health Unit.
Good afternoon, my name is Damian Nuns, I'm the Animal Services Team Leader, Wellington.
Good afternoon, my name is Wayne Battie and I'm an Animal Control Officer of Animal Services.
Okay, thank you very much for that. We have the owner of Dog Breaker, Brian Tressider, so welcome along, Brian. We also have other council officers in attendance. Ones I have listed here are the Executive Leadership Team member Liam Hodges, Heidi Moller in the background, hello Liam, and Shaun Officer Johnson, who is right alongside me, so I'm currently in the council building, and other officers whose names are on the screen. Welcome to you all. Back to business. A classification of a menacing dog was placed on the Dog Breaker, on the dog, his name is Breaker, by Wellington City Council's Public Health Team at the end of June. Brian Tressider, the dog's owner, has appealed that classification and the role of this committee is to listen to the evidence and after deliberating, decide whether to uphold or rescind that classification. And I need to make it clear at this point that some of our questions to both Public Health and Animal Control Officers and to Mr. Tressider will be very direct, very challenging, hopefully not impolite, but our role is to gain a full understanding of why this classification has been placed on the dog to enable us to help us intelligently make our decision. So at that point, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Council's Public Health Team will speak and then councillors will have the opportunity to ask any questions. Then Brian Tressider will speak and councillors will have the opportunity to ask any questions of him. Public Health will then respond to what has Brian Tressider has said and councillors can then ask further questions, then Brian Tressider will respond and councillors have the final opportunity to ask any questions of him. Is that all understood? Okay, and at that stage, we will adjourn and the, our committee will have deliberate on the matter with the public excluded, but that session will be fully minuted and once we've had a chance to talk, we will then, and made a decision of sorts, we will then resume this meeting and debate the motion as per the usual procedures. So that's the order of proceedings and like I said in my email a short while ago, I don't know whether this meeting will take one hour or four hours, but we will do what we need to do to ensure that the matter is dealt with fairly and appropriately. Okay, at that point, I think it's time to invite the representatives of Wellington City Council's Public Health Team and Animal Control Team, namely Helen Jones, Jude Austin, sorry, Damian Nunn and Wayne Battie, to make any statements and to answer any questions from councillors. So I will hand it over to your team a moment ago, one or two of you, I was slightly struggling to hear, but I will interrupt you if I'm, maybe it's just my deafness. If we're struggling, if I'm struggling to hear you, I will let you know, otherwise it is over to you and this session will be uninterrupted. Thank you.
Good afternoon councillors again, this matter will be led by Jude Austin, so Jude Austin is the team leader in my team and it's her team that deals with dog registration and indirectly with the Animal Control Officers who deal with field services. So Jude is going to run over a summary of the case and then open it up to questions at the end. I'll pass you over to Jude.
Because we cannot say at this point, is there any chance of having slightly greater volume because I can hear you, but it's a wee bit of an effort. If we can't do that, I would just have to make the effort.
Maybe we could just move you a little bit closer councillor. But we'll speak up as well.
Thank you.
Good afternoon councillors, this matter is in relation to a menacing classification based on Mr. Tressider's dog Breaker. Key points to note in relation to this matter are as follows. Wellington City Council consolidated by law requires dogs to be on lead in most public areas, including the area where the attacker came, being the lookout for part on Bernard and Leno Straits. And on, and the Dog Control Act requires dogs to be under control of their owner at all times. The complainant was bitten by Breaker who was off lead and not controlled in an on-leash area. The complainant suffered a moderate injury that took several months to heal, including under the care of a district nurse. His medical records describe the injury as a dog bite with deep puncture wounds on the complainant's leg and a large flap of skin which was left hanging from the complainant's leg. Mr. Evans has also stated that on a separate occasion, Mr. Tressider himself has received an injury from Breaker and the blood left on the street led to some police attention. I have not questioned around the police attention or this matter. Mr. Tressider originally says he had his back to his dog, walking away from him at the time of the attack and therefore did not see the accident. He subsequently went on to say that Breaker did not attack George and the incident lasted only five seconds. Mr. Tressider has a history of non-compliance with the Dog Control Act in so much as he's received a written warning for having his dog off lead in the past. At the time of this warning being issued, the dog was also unregistered. He was given seven days to register the dog. There is also supporting information that Breaker has rushed at the complainant's neighbour. Whilst off lead, the neighbour was on a scooter at the time and the dog lunged at him as he rode past. Mr. Tressider has breached sections five and 63 of the Dog Control Act 1996, which are to ensure that the dog is kept under control at all times and to the owner of a dog shall be liable for any damage done by the dog. He has also been issued with a breach of section 57 notice. As a result of the incident, the Animal Control Team placed a menacing classification on the Dog Breaker using an attack rating report. The attack rating report is a robust and consistent rating process that ensures that the Wellington City Council meets its obligations under section 33A. Territorial authority may classify a dog as menacing. In summary, Wellington City Council has an obligation to ensure public safety and that they are protected from aggressive animals that can cause, that can cause serious harm. It also must take relevant steps under the Dog Control Act to ensure that no further harm will occur in relation to this dog. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions from councillors? Because I have quite a few, but you can certainly ask them first. I saw Deputy Mayor Free's hand up first.
Yes, you mentioned the neighbour who, on the scooter, how confident, I know that the neighbour sent in a photograph of the dog that, that looked like a collie, but how confident are you that that, you can say that, that incident was Breaker?
We didn't have enough of evidence to infringe, but we were, the offence and the dog description is significantly similar and we are confident based on that.
Thank you.
Councillor Conde.
Thanks, I have many questions, so I'll just ask a few to start with and then hand off to someone else. Just following up on Deputy Mayor's question about the scooter incident, was that information that you had at the time that you made the menacing classification, because in the document pack that we have, that that statement was made only after the medicine classification was made, so can you talk to us about whether you knew about that prior to this incident or prior to the medicine classification?
Yeah, that is correct, it only came to our attention on the 7th of July, I believe, which is why it's not entered as evidence, it's entered as supplementary information.
So, so that wasn't information that you had when you made the medicine classification?
No.
Okay, thank you. I guess for me, the, it's obvious that these two dogs had an incident that Mr. Evans sustained a dog bite and the question is fundamentally, how confident can we be about which dog bit Mr. Evans? So I guess my question to you is, is on what evidence did you base your conclusion that it was Breaker that was the dog that bit Mr. Evans?
I'll refer you to Damian Nunn's team leader.
Bye, can everyone hear me all right? The evidence we had was supplied, was from Gary Evans. He was the only witness to the dog bite. When we questioned him about, was he, which, which dog actually bit him and was he adamant with it, he kept saying that yes, the Dog Breaker was the, was the dog that bit him, definitely was not his own dog, that was his opinion. Unfortunately, Mr. Tressider had his back towards the incident and was unable to provide that detail.
And also, Mr. Tressider stated that when he did turn around, that George, Mr. Evans' dog, had fur in his mouth. So he had perhaps been defending himself against the dog and not Mr. Evans.
Thank you, the wife was also on the scene, I understand she was holding George's leash. So was she not a witness to what happened? That's what my question is, why did we not get a witness statement from her? Why is that not in the pack?
That was, I did not feel that at the time, that she would have given a different account of events, I thought they would probably be the same.
Final question just for now and then I'll hand off to the next person on the list, but this incident, it seems to me would, would have happened quite, likely quite quickly, it might have been a bit chaotic. Is it reasonable to think that, and obviously no one wants to think that their own dog has bitten anyone, so I'm kind of saying, obviously Mr. Evans is not going to want to believe it was his dog that bit him, he's going to want to believe it was the other dog. So how much chaos do we have in this sort of incident and how confident can we be about his recollection?
His recollection on the day that I spoke to him was quite clear.
Thank, thank you for that. Liz Kelly, your turn.
Kia ora, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did have a couple of questions, but they have been raised, so one of the key ones that I wanted to ask of the officers is, have we followed our policy process?
Yes.
And its entirety, we haven't diverted in any way at all from what our policy process is?
No, it's all specified under, was it the menacing dog classification in the Act, which then refers us, our process is the attack rating report, which is appendix 11.
Okay, thank, thank you, that's, I just wanted to be, to have that confirmed, to be confident that our policy and process has been followed to the letter, so I'm really quite interested to hear why this has been appealed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I will ask a few of my many questions right now. So my first one is directed to Animal Control Officer Wayne Battie, who visited Brian Tressider on the 25th of May. Did you, did you actually get to see Breaker at that point, please?
Yes, I did, the dog was present when I visited.
And what was your impression of the dog at that point in time?
Well, the dog showed no aggression towards me when I was talking to Mr. Tressider.
Okay, thank you. Just out of interest of any other members of the Animal Control or Public Health Team seen or interacted with Breaker at all?
Previously?
No, only myself previously, on the day I issued the written warning for his dog being off lead on Oriental Bay.
Okay, oh, that was you that did that because that was blocked out. Okay, thank you. I had another question, which has already been asked, but about the statement from the only other witness to the incident, namely Mr. Evans' wife Isabel. Now, I think the response to that was, you assumed that she would give much the same information, but is it reasonable to assume or might she have looked at it from a slightly different point of view?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, moving on then.
Can I just add to that, that Mr. Evans has said that in his emails since, that his wife is quite afraid or apprehensive of going for a walk after the incident due to the fact that they had seen Breaker out there again off lead.
Wow.
Yes, I have read that, thank you. Right, Mr. Evans received an injury while trying to break up the dogs fighting, this is quoting directly from the report, possibly redirected aggression from the dog fight. Can you just elaborate on what redirected aggression from the dog fight means exactly?
Redirected means that the dogs are possibly in a frenzy of attack, if you like, teeth are lashing and the closest thing generally gets bitten, whether that be a leg or a hand or another thing, because the dogs are quite worked up and the redirection can be a lash out at even a helping. Does that make sense?
It does, but does that kind of say that the dog didn't necessarily have it in for, for Mr. Evans, this is the Dog Breaker, didn't have it in for Mr. Evans, that he was, well, in a sense collateral damage, not downplaying the extent of his injuries?
That is a possibility, however, I think we're missing the fact that Mr. Evans said that the dog attacked his dog as well first, so there was aggression there. Whether it's aggression at persons or animals or domestic animals, protected wildlife, the menacing classification covers the series.
Yep, okay, thank you, Councillor Conde.
Thank you. One of my questions, it follows on from the comment you made, you said that his recollection on the day I spoke to him was quite clear. Can you tell us how, when you spoke to him, how often you spoke to him, leading prior to the email that you received? Because the email chain that we have in our pack starts with "as discussed", so obviously you'd had prior conversations with him, can you just fill us on, on the, what happened before the email chain started?
So we received the complaint via the Wellington City Council system, the fresh service system, I rang Mr. Evans to discuss the matter with him. I asked him to tell me the incident and how it broke down. Now, this was, I'm going from memory here, I think it was four days or so after the incident, he didn't report it straight away. And he virtually gave me blow by blow of how the incident took place. I questioned him at the time, are you sure that, you know, how sure are you that the dog that bit you was Breaker and not your own? And at that time, he quickly responded, I am absolutely positive that the dog Breaker bit me. That did not even have any hesitation or waiver at any stage through the investigation.
Thanks, do you recall when you spoke to him, did you ask him about whether George had lunged at Breaker when he approached?
There was no mention of that and at the time, I didn't ask him, no, I did not because that hadn't come up at that point.
Yeah.
He was on lead as well.
Yeah.
Sorry, can you repeat that question, Councillor Conde, I didn't quite catch it?
Oh, I asked whether, whether, the officer asked Mr. Evans whether George had lunged towards Breaker, so Mr. Tressider has said in his statement that he believes that George, even though he was on lead, lunged towards Breaker. And then I guess another question I have is, did you ask him, Mr. Evans at the time, whether George was adequately under control? Because in his statement, he kind of talks about being worried his wife is going to get pulled over, she's holding the leash, as I understand it, and he's concerned that she might be pulled over, which doesn't to me indicate a dog under control, so can you, can you unpack that for me as well?
Yeah, sure, that statement was to do when the two dogs were fighting, that he stepped in to help the situation because he thought his wife Isabel was going to lose, fall over, but that is while the two dogs were fighting. Now, both dogs are of similar size and would be quite a heavy weight for an older person.
Yes, definitely. If we could just go on to the, the visit when you went to, to visit Mr. Tressider to inform him of this complaint. Can you just talk us through kind of what, what happened? Did you contact him or before you went to see him at his home, what happened when you went to see him at his home?
From what I understand, contact had not been, had not been made, hence was the reason why I went to the address. And I informed Mr. Tressider that we had received a complaint, that his dog had attacked another dog and also attacked the other dog's owner, causing moderate injuries. And he informed me that he believed that the injury that had been caused to the other dog owner was only a scratch. And at that point, I asked him if he could supply a statement to Animal Services, which he did a few hours later.
Thank you, at that time, did you make it clear to Mr. Tressider what the process was for the investigation that would follow up and how he should participate?
Yes, I did, yep, I informed him that, once we had received his statement and received the other statement from the complainant, we would carry out a full investigation.
Thank you, and did you make it clear to Mr. Tressider kind of the seriousness of the potential consequences from this investigation? Did you talk at that time about what the outcome might be if, if it was found that Breaker had bitten Mr. Evans?
I didn't want to make any assumptions, that comes after the, after we make the recommendations and stuff, that comes at the end of the investigation, so, yeah.
And then just my, I've got my last question for now, which is just, why did we not provide Mr. Tressider with a statement of the complaint? Is that, is that normal process that we wouldn't normally provide him with a statement from the complainant?
That is correct, we would not normally provide a statement to the other witness.
Could you explain why that is?
We need independent. We need independent and confidentiality. We need independent statements. And we wanted to hear in their own words what they saw or witnessed and also confidentiality.
Cool. Thank you. I'll hand over to Liz.
Yeah, Liz.
I am muted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just following on from my first question, which was confirming that we had followed all our processes. I would like to ask them, because I've had another look and I, I don't know, have I missed it? What are the grounds for this appeal? If all our processes have been followed and we have acted within the act and, you know, we've followed all the things that we should do and our staff have done what they need to do. What are the grounds? Through you, Mr. Chair, can I ask that of the? Am I asking you or am I asking the officers?
Well, I, my understanding is that it is his right to, for an objection to be listened to.
You are indeed right, Counselor. The Dog Control Act provides for a person to object to a menacing classification if it's been placed on their dog. So it's a legislative right.
Okay, okay. So, so that then means that now a precedent has been set, we could potentially expect this again?
We could potentially, yes.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing from Mr. Trissiter.
Okay, I have, I have just a few more questions at this stage and then we will move on. On page 20, it states that as a result of the investigation, the officer finds, and at that point, there are four factors listed, which include Trissiter failed to keep Breaker under control, Trissiter was not walking Breaker on lead. I'm quoting precisely at this point. Plus, there are two more. Now, there is no disputing those facts. As far as most of us are concerned, I think it's fair to say. And one of those has already been dealt with and the owner penalized accordingly. But I'm interested in knowing why those factors are immediately linked to the next recommendation that Breaker be classified as a menacing dog. Those are faults on the part of the owner, are they not? Or do they have a direct bearing on determining the nature of the dog, which is being described as menacing? Are they not separate issues? Maybe they're not. That's why I'm asking.
They're not separate issues. Sorry, they're not separate issues. They're all consideration when we have to take in account the level of compliance. When, when you look at the attack rating report, part of it is, has things happened before? Like, what is the level of compliance with the dog owner? So there's, previous history is taken into account and that is on the Appendix 11-2. And we also had to assess recurrence of recurrence likelihood. So that's why they're all sort of matters that have to be taken into account when they're, when they're doing the attack rating.
Okay, thank you. Counselor O'Neill?
Kyodo, my question was surrounding the Labrador dog and if within taking into account, we also look at the traits of the other dog. If this was just a conflict between two dogs, would we then be looking at the Labrador as menacing at the same time? Or because the collie attacked another human? Yeah, how does, how does that kind of play out? And also preliminary to that, did the Labrador sustain any injuries from what evolved or was that documented at any point?
There were no injuries on the Labrador. And that is quite normal for dog attacks, dog on dog. The injuries with the skin of a dog being a lot more tougher than human skin. We quite often deal with dog attacks where dogs do not cause injury to other dogs. We did not think of classifying the Labrador because I have was on lead and under control. The dog Breaker approached the Labrador.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Can you excuse, bear with me just a brief? Okay, just a slight hiccup there, which we were negotiating our way around. Okay, I think we're almost out of questions here. Look, I do want to, I can either ask this later or ask it now, and I think I might ask it now, just on this business of the frenzied attack and the injury to Mr. Evans. Now, it does clearly say here that Animal Control is satisfied that Breaker, amongst other things, rushed both Mr. Evans and George. On the other hand, Mr. Trissiter asserts that Breaker went to say hello and a fight ensued from there. Now, let's for the moment assume that Breaker did rush the other dog, George. Animal Control is stating that Breaker rushed Mr. Evans and George, and that's the order in which it is stated. In other words, he had it in for both of them. Now, would it not be more accurate? Harking back to the question and answer a little while ago, would it not be more accurate that if Breaker did in fact do any rushing, it was at George alone? And I think there is a distinction here. After all, Mr. Evans was walking behind his wife, the dog, who was the dog handler. So at that point, he was separated by a meter or two or a few, I don't know. Perhaps you can tell us the answer, from, from his dog, George. So the dog, George, was rushed at, if we accept that. And Mr. Trissiter doesn't accept that, but he will have a chance to refute that shortly. But what I'm asking is whether we accept that it was George that was rushed at. It was not Mr. Evans and George.
The rushing comes out of the act. It's one of the sections of the act when a dog rushes either a person or another animal. So that's where that comes into part of the legislation. And Mr. Trissiter could, I would argue, Mr. Trissiter is saying that George went to say hello when he had his back to the dog and was walking away from the dog.
But I guess the point I'm making is, or, okay, I'm asking is whether it's fair to say he rushed, the dog rushed both of them. Okay, perhaps you've answered it. I'll leave it at that. In the meantime, Counselor Conde?
Thanks again. Just about the injury and where Mr. Evans was bitten on his calf. We've got a photograph of our pack that shows the injury, but it's quite zoomed in. Like, you can't actually see kind of where it is on his leg. And I was just wondering if, if the location of the injury on his leg is consistent with where Breaker was standing, if you know what I mean? Like, consistent with where the dog was standing, that it was, that that would make sense?
I refer you to the medical report on his treatment. It tells you the location of the injury, I believe it's the calf, which is the lower part of the leg, of course, so.
Yeah, I just meant more specifically than that, like whether it was on his left calf or right, you know, which side of his leg it was on, but we may not have that information.
Medical report, right calf.
Yeah, but it doesn't say which part of, which part of his leg. It just says on that right leg.
The right calf.
All right. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about some of the paperwork that's been filled in. At one point in your report, it's on page 43 of our papers. I'm sorry, I don't know what pages is on your papers, so hopefully that's helpful. It states that the complainant, Mr. Evans, was in control of the dog, George. But then it seems to be in other places in the conversation that we've had is in fact that Mr. Evans' wife was holding the lead and was the one in control of the dog. Is that a mistake?
That must be. It definitely is about his wife that was walking the dog on the lead.
Yeah. Another question about the paperwork. There's an investigating officer checklist at one point where it kind of goes through and says, is there a witness statement? Is there this, is there that? And there's a column that says, if no, provide explanation. But actually, that table wasn't filled in correctly. It wasn't where, where, for example, the witness statement wasn't taken from the wife. There was no explanation provided there about why that statement wasn't provided. Can you talk to us about why that table was filled in the way that it was?
Wow.
It's just an omission. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions for now, Malcolm.
Thank you. I have just one last question at this stage. And that is, I asked by email a couple of days ago whether the, whether, got to get these dogs around the right way, Breaker had been neutered. And I was given the response, no, not according to our records. But then, when I was reading through the papers again today, I happened to come across a box that had been ticked, which indicated that he had, he had been de-sexed. Now, obviously, we'll get an answer from Mr. Trissiter shortly, but.
I too noticed that, Counselor Sparrow, and that is completely my fault.
Okay, so.
It's not, as far as we are aware, he is not de-sexed.
And as far as Mr. Trissiter is aware, he hasn't been because he was shaking his head a moment ago. Right. Okay, look, I think at this point, it's appropriate to hand over to, I see there are no more questions. We will have the, would you like to ask one now, Liz?
Just based on your question, what's the relevance of you asking that question to, to the, to the dog being menacing?
I don't know whether I have to answer that question at this point. Your questions, we're directing questions to the.
I'm just trying to understand your thinking of how that is relevant to menacing.
I will, I will explain later. I have a valid reason for asking that question. I will explain that later when we have a chance to deliberate.
Sorry, Malcolm, perhaps could we ask, because I was gonna, I had a similar question, saw that you had asked it. But maybe the Animal Control Officers can talk about why de-sexing a dog might make it less aggressive? Because that's my understanding, just before we move on, since that might help Liz understand why you wanted to know.
That is a good question that Counselor Conde is asking. So I will go to Animal Control, Public Health to answer that one.
Sure. Not only is a part of the legislation that a dog has to be de-sexed according to the menacing classification in Wellington City, but a de-sexed dog is, has, it's been scientifically proven that a de-sexed dog has reduced aggression to others. Whether it be other dogs, generally less territorial and can be a more settled pit, if you like. When, when they're left entire, as we say, or not de-sexed, dogs can be a bit more instinctual.
Yeah, that was my understanding too. Okay, thank you for that. Right, we shall hand over to Mr. Trissiter to present his case.
Hello? Right. Great, thank you. I've been told I have to wear the mask for the entirety of the time I'm here, so I hope you can hear me okay. Kia ora katau katau. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And first, I am actually sorry that the complainant was hurt and that our dog Breaker is always on a lead now. The main reason I'm here isn't about dogs, but fairness and to put sunlight on the process that led to this. The council's evidence say I didn't see the attack as I was walking away at the time. The complainant's dog has lunged at Breaker probably three times previously. And I would note that apparently he hasn't been de-sexed either. And two und-de-sexed dogs put together is a potentially bad situation. So I, because of that, I walked away into the triangle. But when I heard the first growl, I didn't call Breaker, so he was probably confused about what he wanted me to do. So in his confusion, he ran to see the complainant's dog, because Breaker is actually very sociable. I heard the first growl and turned and I saw the whole fight, which lasted about five seconds. I saw the complainant's wife trying to pull George, their dog, away from Breaker. I would note that as the only other witness, the complainant's wife has not provided any evidence, although I do actually understand her not doing so. I saw the complainant standing beside Breaker. So he's facing me, Breaker's head is here, tail here. And Mr. Evans is pushing his bare leg, because he was wearing shorts, into Breaker's neck, mane. He's got a, like, very long hairy neck. Council emailed the complainant on the 24th of May, Mr. Nuns, I think perhaps, asking for a statement and, and what it needed to cover, including what you and the owner did to break it up. The complainant never answered this question as to his own actions, but in a later email that same day, says that, "I did not assist and did not move off the lookout. I was about 15 metres away on the other side of a low fence, so my best option was to call Breaker. And he was blocked in position with the complainant's dog in front, a bank and a fence to his left and the complainant to his right." And I quote the complainant's statement here. "The dog then viciously turned its, turned its attention to me. Breaker extracted himself when I called by rearing up on his hind legs, pivoting with his back towards the complainant or against the complainant perhaps, and then down and ran back to me. So at no point, as the, as the complainant says, viciously turned his attention on the complainant. After the fight, the complainant nor his wife noticed the injury immediately. He looked down at his leg and he noticed some bleeding and said he would have to return home. And then he turned around and began to walk back towards his house. The complainant's dog was unhurt despite having been attacked in a vicious manner." And, as that's Mr. Evans' words, "And you had a clump of Breaker's fur in his mouth. And I asked if I could help, but was just told, just told to just keep that dog away from me. I didn't see the injury, but I saw him show a bloodied handkerchief to his wife as he walked away, as she seemed confused about what was going on. I was visited, I think, I don't know if it was the 24th or the 25th, Mr. Betty, I think you said 25th, by Mr. Betty and told I needed to provide a statement, but I had to ask him who to send it to as he prepared to leave. And that was the last I heard about it until the notice of menacing dog classification arrived in the mail. I didn't even receive an acknowledgement of receipt of my statement. On the other hand, the council officer and the complainant continued to contact each other subsequent to that. I found the officer's report to be biased towards the complainant's emotive and short on detailed statement. And while it cherry picked from my statement, which was made without knowledge of the complainant's allegations, and it seemed to try and make it seem that I didn't see and didn't care. I actually think it's most likely that the complainant was accidentally bitten by his own dog while his leg was buried in Breaker's fur and his. fur and his neck. So thank you for your time. That's me.
Thank you, Mr Tressiter. I expect we have a few questions. I have a few. Well, I will ask one at the outset and then give others the opportunity, and that is that you've, you've stated that George has, George has, just making sure I'm getting this around the right way, George has sometimes responded aggressively to Breaker's friendly greetings, but you say that it was George who first lunged at Breaker, as he has done several times in the past, and George often gets aggressive when Breaker does the usual dog greeting. So my question is, and I ask this with respect, why on earth did you walk away when you saw George approaching and expect Breaker to follow you? Would it not have been the sensible thing to do to have immediately called Breaker or to have physically removed him from proximity to George? And I ask this, being a dog owner myself, would you have not, would you not have wanted to ensure that there wasn't any aggression takes place on the part of either, if you know that it has happened in the past?
An answer to that, I did intend Breaker to follow me, but at a moment of absent-mindedness, I thought he would. I had a stick in my hand and I sort of waved that. He's, he's very obedient, usually under control, but as I say, perhaps in a moment of absent-mindedness, I neglected to call him, and he's run off in the other direction. And yes, so you're right, could have called him, but I neglected to in that, in that occasion.
Okay, councillor Matthews.
Mr Tressiter, I'm just wondering, the complainant mentioned that you were bleeding and that there was blood in the street, and what's your response to that?
That was just, I have some varicose veins in my leg, and I was actually in the same area at the time. And rather than go home, he likes to try and grab me round the, round the ankle with his paws to stop me going home. And all that happened was that he just scratched one of the varicose veins in my leg, and it started to bleed quite profusely.
Thank you, councillor Conde.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us today, Mr Tressiter. In your statement, you said that when Mr Betty came to your house, to inform you of the incident, that he did tell you that Mr Evans had required some stitches to this injury? Is that correct?
That was after I, I said that it was, as he mentioned, just a scratch, because from my perspective, the only way that Breaker, because I, after the incident, when Mr Evans said, "Just keep that dog away from me," that was my first indication, that is, in his impression, Breaker had caused the injury. And I thought that the only way it could have happened is when Breaker leapt up with his back to him, would be he could have caused the scratch with one paw as he was going up, his right paw, or on Mr Evans' leg with his left paw when he came down. That's why I had assumed that it was a scratch. But then, as you say, Mr Betty did inform me at that stage that it was a bite.
Yeah, that required stitches, yeah. So when you spoke to Mr Betty, he told you it was a bite that required stitches?
Yes.
But later that.
He didn't say bite, he said required stitches.
Yes, you're correct, I apologize. He said that he'd been injured and it required stitches. But in your email that you sent after that conversation, you still made the comment about perhaps it was caused by a stray claw? Do you want to explain what you were thinking about then?
As I just said, I thought maybe it was a scratch, and you know, old people's skin is quite fragile, so I thought it may have been a scratch that needed stitches. I didn't realize it was a bite. And one thing I'd like to add at this point is if you look at the picture of the bite, a rough collie has a long, narrow snout. And to me, the, the bite looks more like it's been inflicted by a dog like a Labrador rather than a rough collie.
I'll just ask one more question, Mr Tressiter, and then we'll hand you over to someone else. Can you just talk to us about when, did you feel like when Mr Betty came to your home and spoke to you about it, did you feel that you really understood the seriousness of the, of the complaint that was being made against Breaker at that time?
No, I did not. No, I, I didn't, because I had no idea that, you know, I just, I know what I saw during the fight, and I, I didn't, I had no idea what Mr Evans had alleged. So I, I possibly did, I did not know the seriousness of it.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Free.
Yes, thank you for coming to speak to us, Mr Tressiter. I, I note that you say that dogs that haven't been de-sexed can be dangerous when they get together, and I was a little bit taken aback to see in your statement that you regretted not keeping Breaker on a leash and that you would do in future, apart from when you're in an off-leash dog area. And I wonder how safe you really think it would be for Breaker to be in an off-leash dog area, given some of the behaviour that you identified can happen?
Oh, as dog, it, it does happen from time to time. He has been attacked, but I, I just, I balance that with his freedom to just run around and be a dog. And he, his, his nature, he, sorry, he's a very good-natured dog, so it's never really been an issue with us. We never denatured him because we thought there was a possibility that we may breed at some stage, but now he's maybe getting a little old for that now, but he's quite, he's quite settled and doesn't really display any, any aggressive behaviour. So we may as well leave him entire now, in, in my opinion, if, if we're given that, given that choice.
And can I just ask one more question, Mr Chair? You mentioned you had an injury with varicose veins. I don't know, how much pressure would it take to, for a scratch to actually cause a lot of bleeding?
The, the vein was in my ankle, and it was, it was quite swollen up at the time, so it didn't need very much pressure at all. Just basically, all he had to do was rub his claw over it would be enough to rupture it.
Thank you.
Before we go to Liz, look, can I just follow up on that one? That particular incident in January, I believe, of 2021, Mr Evans states that blood in the street occasioned subsequent police attention. Did the police make any contact with you at the time, Mr Tressiter?
Yes, they did. They, the next day, they followed the blood trail back to my house, and I think my wife met them up on the street. And so they, they phoned me and asked what happened. I explained it to them, and they offered to take me to hospital, but I think I was pretty much okay. The bleeding had obviously stopped by then, so it was okay.
So from your point of view, there was absolutely no malice on the part of Breaker in regard to that, that particular incident?
Absolutely not. It, it actually doesn't have anything to do with this at all.
Okay, thank you. Liz?
Thank you, and welcome, Mr Tressiter. I was just wondering if you would like to comment on some of the things that we've heard today in the report and from the officers, and you, and you haven't touched on them, so I thought if I could just ask them specifically to you. Would you, would you like to respond to the comments made regarding you being non-compliant in the past, with regard to registration was one instance, but I guess there was something that I did read, which was plural, so I'm assuming that you are known to the, our team. And would you also like to comment to the comment that's been made that Breaker is known to have been off the lead, and even after this incident, has been seen off the lead? Would you like to comment on those two questions, Mr Tressiter?
Yeah, sure. I think maybe last year, we had a lot going on, and we neglected to register him by the due date, but as soon as we realized, we did so. As far as being off lead, we've actually, he's been a very compliant dog, and we've walked him off lead for six years, pretty much all the time. But now that this incident's happened, I've learned from it, and I, I realize that that was a mistake, and these things can get out of hand quite quickly. So as I said before, he is on lead. As far as having been seen off lead, we do have one of those extender leads that allows the dog to walk about five metres or more away from you, and it's just a thin little rope. So it may have given the impression that he wasn't on lead when he actually was. So I can guarantee you that he is being walked on lead all the time.
Okay, so just so that you know, I have had dogs for years, so I do, I am aware of the, the tools that you are talking about. And also, in another life, I was a poster in the old days, not when you had these little cars, which I would have loved to have driven around in, but I had, had a bike. And, and I can tell you that we got to know the dogs in the different communities and which ones to be aware of. And unfortunately, I've been bitten a number of times by, by dogs. So I am aware of also the concern that the other party, particularly the wife, might have now about walking, now going for a walk. But I just wanted to pick up on your comment about why you're here, because you don't think it's fair. And, and I, and I was quite interested in that because I note that the other party aren't here giving evidence. And so have you got a view about that?
Yes, I have. I was just talking to the, to the point that I was asked for a statement on what happened, and it seemed to have been mostly ignored, my original statement, whereas Mr Evans' statement seems to be pretty much taken as what actually happened. And also the, the statement that because I was walking away, I didn't see what happened, but it didn't actually reflect the fact that I also said the reason I was walking away is because George had attacked Breaker in the past or behaved aggressively towards him. So I, I just feel that we haven't been treated in a balanced and fair way.
So, so do you think the fact that the other party aren't here giving evidence and being given an opportunity to refute perhaps some of the comments that, that you're making now is fair?
Well, I, I believe that he was asked if he would like to attend, but he declined.
Okay.
And I'd, I'd also just like to add that I, I can, I can see it from his perspective, the fact that he's just been walking down the street, lovely day, enjoying it. Next minute, he finds himself in the middle of a dog fight, then he's injured. So, you know, he's, he's afterwards, he's going to be, you know, distressed, shocked, angry. Yes, I do have empathy for him in that respect.
And so it was raised as well, just one more, sorry, Mr Chair, it, it was raised that at one stage in the report, that the wife had said that she was holding them, and then at another time, he was holding the dog. I wonder if that was because Mr Evans has had to intervene to break it up, and that perhaps that's why both situations are actually true. They're just, if you put it into context, would you accept that?
No, because the, the complainant's statement says that Breaker turned on him, that he attacked, if you read the complainant's statement, he says that Breaker attacked George, he tried to break them up, and then Breaker turned on him. That's not what happened. And as I said, he did say that he tried to break them up, but not how he did it. And he did it by standing beside my dog and shoving and pushing his leg. He was standing with his arms out like this, and he was pushing his leg into Breaker's mane while George was lunging at him. That's what I saw.
I will ask a question now, Mr Tressiter. If you've been, you say you have been walking Breaker, wearing a muzzle since the end of June, when he was deemed to be menacing. Now, is that, can you explain, is that a big deal when such an action is designed to ensure the safety of people and animals when he is in a public place?
So, could you, could you repeat that, please?
I'm asking you, you say that you have been walking Breaker, wearing a muzzle, so Breaker's been wearing a muzzle since the end of June, when he was deemed to be menacing. So I'm asking, is that, if, look, if the, if this committee upholds the classification that Breaker is menacing, then you're going to have to continue to have a muzzle on him when he is being walked? Is that a big deal?
Well, it's, it's an inconvenience. It's a big deal for him, I think, I would say.
I mean, sorry, the rest of my question was, because that action is designed to ensure the safety of people and animals when he is in a public place. So that is the reason for it?
Yes, I, I understand that, but my, my assertion is that he doesn't pose any danger to people in a public place. But, I mean, it's up to you to deliberate and decide whether he has to wear that muzzle or not, and if so, we'll comply with that.
Okay, thank you, councillor Conde.
Thank you. Mr Tressiter, can you tell me, in your statement, you said that Breaker came away with a mouthful of fur. Can you just tell me what you saw of that and how you noticed that? Did you notice it as the dog came back to you?
No, I said that George, the other dog, had a mouthful of Breaker's fur.
Okay. How could, if you, you were about 15 metres away, is that right?
That's right.
How were you able to see that clearly?
There was a big piece of fur.
Okay.
It really was.
Collies, collies do have a lot of fur, I'll allow.
Yes.
Okay. In the past, has Breaker regularly approached other dogs or people when they were, when he was off lead?
Not people, but dogs, yes.
Okay. Have you ever had an incident before like this, where that hasn't gone well?
Yes.
Okay.
But having said that, when I was talking before about, no, you know, dogs not being denaturalized, he, yeah, he has been attacked from time to time. He's, he's never been the aggressor.
Right. Thank you. And then I just wanted to ask you this final question about the process, which is, I really understand that you don't feel like the process has been fair, and what do you think, what should have happened during the process that would have made it fair to you? Like, if we could go back and do it over again, what do you think that we, we should do to make sure that it was fair for you?
Um, I would have liked to have known what the allegations were that were being made. Because, yes, that's 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 in a nutshell, really.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Frey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tressida. I guess I want to pick up a little bit on um councillor Sparrow's questioning. Given that you say you're very, very sorry about the injury that occurred and you wouldn't want anything like that to happen again, is it such a big deal to make sure it can't happen again that um your dog should wear a muzzle and be on a leash? It's for his protection, I would think, too, because, you know, if he is a repeat offender in this regard, it would not, I would think, probably not look good. So is it such a big deal if he were to have to wear a muzzle to protect everybody?
Um, we're not, I don't believe that the public needs, that's one of the, another reason I'm here is because I don't believe that the the public needs to be protected from Breaker. He isn't going to bite anyone. Um, and I don't believe he has bitten anyone. Now, then, or way into the past. Um, I, you know, I've I've decided that I'm going to keep him on a lead. Um, and I believe that's enough. And I believe that he's a well behaved, compliant enough dog. Um, that it's it's actually a non-issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Kieran, thank you, Brian. Um, my questions are, most of my other questions have been asked by others, but I just kind of wanted to gauge your um thinking. And obviously, you've a a deep understanding of um the Dog Control Act or what you would consider to be dangerous or not a dangerous behaviour in a dog. So I was just wondering if um, you know, in the past, Breaker's been attacked by other dogs. And um if you would see, you know, in in the situation of reverse, if you were Mr. Evans and this had happened to your dog, would you be classifying that as menacing? Or do you think um that that classification would be unfair in that case? Or how, yeah, yeah, what more would you um need to be seen seen in a in a in a behaviour for it to be classed as menacing? Where would you draw that line? Um, just in accordance with the act, I'm seeking to understand.
Um, I would say any, if he showed any behaviour um that was intimidating in any way to um the public. Whether, you know, if 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 he appeared frightening or, you know, rushed people that in a way that may have been interpreted as being aggressive. That's, yeah, I guess that's what I would consider to be um. Because obviously, people don't have to suffer injuries, I guess I'm saying.
Thank you. And then just on that, because you've mentioned um that Breaker has has come up to greet people before. And I've been a dog owner in the past as well. And um some can't tell if a dog's approaching you off leash, if it's got uh good intentions. So I was just wondering around the, you know, if a dog is off leash, how does someone to know if um a dog approaching is to be intimidating or to just give a give a hello, which I know it can be a little bit difficult to distinguish there.
Um, usually, dogs with tails will have their dog, their their tail sticking directly upwards. It's body language. Um, and obviously, what sort of noises they're making, whether they're baring their teeth, snarling, growling, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Frey.
Yeah, um, sorry, yeah, no, I think I, I'm not on mute. Um, Mr. Tressida, just one last question from me, and it's to do with the scooter rider who believes he saw um your dog and felt intimidated by it. How how do you explain that? And I think it was in your street or very close to it.
I note that um, so that apparently um came to dog control's attention on the seventh of July. Um, the incident apparently happened um in um November, December of twenty twenty, the previous year. So it just seems strange that he would wait um six months. And then um also the fact that the um the statement that he provided, the person on the scooter, um was dated about four days after we notified our attention to appeal.
Okay, so you um just think that it was, he was being opportunistic?
Well, there's a picture, a sort of a general picture of of a rough collie. He, you know, it was, it was supposedly happened. I I don't really know if if this happened or not, because it appears that the dog was on its own. He he didn't see an owner anywhere. So I I I don't see it as being um significant, to be honest. And I and I believe probably that um the council team sought out this statement after they um they found that we were going to appeal. And I I I don't think there's a, there's enough factual information in it to um to say that it's admissible, really, to this hearing.
Okay, I guess we can clarify whether they sought that or not, whether it was volunteered. Okay.
I was going to ask a last question after councillor Conde, but I will ask mine now because it is relates to that particular incident. My question is that um, well, twofold question. The first one is, could that have been your dog in the sense that was, has your dog been allowed to wander at will? Or has he kept on a fenced property, Brian? That's my first question.
It's not being. Um, we don't have a fenced property, but he's he's kept inside. There's a couple of times when he's managed to get out. Um, so I I would say it's not impossible. But generally, he's kept inside. He's not allowed to wander on his own.
Okay, thank you. And the other aspect of that is the allegation was made by the person who submitted that statement, Stephen, I've got his name somewhere, but anyway, he says someone was calling out to the someone was calling out and the scooter rider assumed that calling out was to the dog. Was that you who was calling out?
Um, all I can say is that it's not impossible. That could have been me, that could have been someone else as well. I don't know.
You don't?
I don't have any recollection of that.
Okay, that was my question, thank you. Councillor Conde.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Tressida, I guess, from your point of view, what I'm, what I think I'm hearing is that you accept that your dog, because your dog was off lead, because Breaker approached this other dog, whether it was a rush or whether it was just an approach. Um, those two things is what has led to this injury. Whether it was Breaker that that bit Mr. Evans or not, leaving that aside, that the this injury wouldn't have happened if if Breaker hadn't been off lead and if he hadn't approached the dog. So I guess what my question for you is, what do you believe is an appropriate consequence for that? Since you are objecting to the menacing classification?
Um, I would say just that um, as I said, he's no longer off lead. Um, and I also have been keeping a closer eye on him. I don't turn my back on him anymore, even if I'm at um, say, Lisle Bay, walking him there, which is an off-lead area. But I keep a close eye on him and and try to keep him close by. But I don't, I I'm objecting because um I've already said, I I I'm not entirely pleased with the council's process. And um the fact that um for Breaker himself, um, I don't see why he should have to wear a muzzle if he doesn't really need to. But as I've said, if that's the the wishes of the council, so be it.
I assume councillor Conde was asking that on a hypothetical basis, knowing that the um this committee only has the authority to say yea or nay in terms of the upholding or rescinding the and can do nothing further other than upholding or rescinding the um.
Quite correct, Chair, yes.
Okay, look, I think it's appropriate um at this stage, I'll see no further hands for us to go back to the, thank you very much, um, Mr. Tressida, for answering those questions. We'll go back to the public health team to respond and councillors to ask what questions are necessary once they have provided a response. So back to the public health and animal control people. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sparrow. Um, our animal control officers are very experienced and make the right decisions. The process that they have gone through is a robust and consistent approach. We admit there was some omissions in the paperwork, but the, on the whole, it's a robust decision made correctly. Some of Mr. Tressida's uh accounts, I I do struggle to um to accept them, considering he was walking away, he had his back, and he himself constantly quoted, he didn't exactly see what happened. Um, furthermore, I did contact Mr. Evans um who had, as an elderly gentleman, he had suffered from this injury for a long period of time. Once he was discharged from the medical centre, he was under constant care of the district nurse. When I approached Mr. Evans to see if he wanted to um come in, he was still appeared distressed over the situation. He advised me that he'd said all that he had to say. Um, he felt that he'd given a complete story and that he just wanted to to uh get over it, basically, he wanted to heal. Um, I might refer to my colleague, Damien, um, to respond to um the the bite comment Mr. Tressida made, that the bite was a Labrador and not a rough collie. Um, I'm not sure what expertise he has in this area, but I wonder if um my colleague Damien can make some comments around the bite.
Sure. Very difficult to obviously answer one hundred percent of the breed of dog that caused it injury. But what we do know from um dog bites is that skin movement and muscle tone quite often have a lot to play with the shape of a bite. Um, and that um can obviously change the shape of a bite. What we do have, though, is reports from a medical profession to say puncture wounds, which would indicate a bite. Unfortunately, we can't categorically say that it was this dog and that or that dog, it is all coming down to witness statements.
Um, finally, um, just a comment regarding the um email that was received by the scooter rider. Um, that arrived um in our email. Um, it was out of the blue. It wasn't solicited by us at all. I believe maybe Mr. Evans had gone to the scooter rider, but I can't comment of any facts behind that. I would only assume. But it was out of the blue and it was significantly similar enough for us to use it as supplementary information. It wasn't into this evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're back to, well, just on that particular one, I have a question. And that is that because it was not substantiated, I had this question written down anyway, and I think Mr. Tressida referred to it. But is that, I mean, obviously, this is not a court of law, but we do have a quasi judicial capacity, I believe. But is, would that be admissible as evidence when it was, um, there was a lack of evidence and it was not substantiated? So um to what degree should it be borne in mind or should it be dismissed?
Uh, that's up to you, to the councillors. Um, yeah, it's it was significantly similar for us to think it had relevance and we had no reason to believe it wasn't true.
But we 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 don't know categorically that it was Breaker, although the chances.
Yeah, no, we don't.
But it it could well have been because rough collies are relatively few and far between, is my understanding. But anyway, I I guess, yeah, I won't make any further comment. It's not a a question, I guess, so I should um move on at this point. Um, councillor O'Neill has a question.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to follow up whether or not um the Labrador George, as in the wit- witness statements, may have appeared to have taken a bite of the other dog. Um, and whether or not we received any information from the owners of the Labrador, whether they noted that their dog had um got some collie fluff in its mouth? Or whether or not that was investigated? You know, if you get a report of um two dogs fighting and someone being injured, whether you check? For those things as well.
I did check with Mr. Evans and he said that his dog appeared unharmed. There was no mention from Mr. Evans regarding the fluff in his in his dog's mouth.
And Mr. Evans didn't um register that Breaker might have been injured or lost some fluff?
No.
No, okay, cool. Um, and then uh secondary to this and apologies, Chair, if this is not um within the scope of questions that would have been answered. But I was just wondering, in your experience in dog control, um, when you're taking statements like this in the past, has there uh been any sort of facilitated mediation when you've got two parties reporting incidents into councils? Um, and yeah, feel free, because I know it's not entirely um yet within the statement, but I was just curious.
Not in regards to a reported dog attack as such. Um, no. In other situations, maybe barking dogs, we have had mediation, but nothing like this for this particular offence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Conde.
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering if if you could make a statement for us in response to Mr. Tressida's comment that essentially that he wasn't clear on the seriousness of the complaint or the seriousness of the injury, um, and that that he would have liked to to know the allegations being made against him. If you can just respond to those two comments in terms of how you believe the process was carried out?
Okay. Um, we always approach the um person, sorry, the um dog owner with a very neutral aspect. And we want to know their side of thing of the story, um, their um review of what happened. Um, we certainly don't necessarily bring up the exact detail because that might impact their statement. Um, but when we say we're investigating, um, and we we generally say we're investigating this um under the Dog Control Act. Um, and as Wayne said, that we will uh look at both evidence, the the evidence and make an informed decision of where we go with it. It would be unwise to assume anything or make judgment before we had both sets of statements and all the evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. I I have um two final questions. And one of those um relates to, we've been told that Raywin Mulligan provided a statement in support of Breaker. She's been professionally involved with dogs for forty years or so, primarily, as I understand it, um, rough collies. Now, Public Health was also provided with the name of a professional dog walker who would Now, Public Health was also provided with the name of a professional dog walker who would vouch for Breaker's character. Have either of these people been approached for further comment, bearing in mind certainly the expertise, as I understand it, of Raywin Mulligan?
No, we haven't. The reason for that is the, those pieces of information were not part of the investigation, not provided as part of the investigation. This was provided to us in regards to his objection to the classification. So it was the information for Mr. Trezada to bring to the hearing.
Would this, I guess this one is different to most other instances where a dog has been classified as menacing, because in those instances, the dog owner has accepted without objecting, as in this instance. Therefore, more work is presumably needed to be done on this one. And I mean, we're, in essence, we're, we are having a say on how we perceive the character of the dog or whether this dog is, in fact, an aggressive dog. And would it not have been helpful to have got more information about the nature of this specific dog? Because we're not talking about the breed as a whole. We're talking about one specific dog, aren't we? Namely Breaker. And its decision is being based on whether we agree with the classification that the dog is menacing.
Yes, councillor. So we took the decision that the report from the dog behaviourist would have been a witness for Mr. Trezada. So if that person was going to talk sort of in support of the dog's current behaviour, then we would have expected Mr. Trezada to call that person as a witness. We don't see that person as being our witness.
Okay, that's, thank you for that. Mr. Trezada might respond to that when it is his turn to respond. Are there any, oh, look, I do have one other question, and that is, would this complaint have got as far as it has if Mr. Evans hadn't been injured? So if it's basically an altercation between two dogs, unfortunately, and we're not downplaying the extent of the injury, but Mr. Evans sustained it in getting involved in the dog fight, and I can understand why he did that. But would it have got as far as this if there had just been the dog fight without an injury sustained by a human being?
Yeah, we would have to, we go through the attack rating system. So I'll hand that over to Damian to answer, because it's the answer that will come out of, going with that.
Yes, the attack rating obviously gives us a level of between nine and 29 to issue either a warning, a menacing classification, or an infringement, or all three. And this is at the higher level. If the owner, sorry, if the victim had not have been injured or no injury, that obviously would have lowered that attack rating somewhat. And the other side of that is that the Dog Control Act, when a menacing classification is issued, it only has to be on the reported behaviour, not necessarily the injury caused by the dog, but just the reported behaviour of an incident that the council can deliberate over a menacing classification. So I think that both situations have been covered.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I see there are no further, there is one more question from councillor Conde.
I do have one more last question. It's just, I'd just be interested in your judgment about why you settled on the menacing classification and why you decided not to proceed to any kind of, I don't know what the correct terminology is, but infringement or prosecution under the act?
Given that at the time of the report, we had no previous history of aggression with Breaker, if there had been multiple reports of aggression or previous dog attacks or something like that, that might have obviously pushed us further over that limit. But as we got to the high end of our report rating, we did not go into dangerous classifications, nor did we proceed into an attack. It would also be different, it would also be unusual to take that very drastic step when we have these tools and our position to carry on, if you like. We have the ability to issue dangerous and menacing classifications. And I think we feel that probably the prosecutions are from the far more serious or repeat offenders.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. That concludes that part of it, and we will hand back to Brian Trezada for his concluding statements, responses to what has been come up in the last little while. Over to you, Brian.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. The health team keep repeating that I was walking away and didn't see what was happening, which is not correct. The other thing is, I don't believe that I was really approached with a neutral aspect. It was actually slightly aggressive demeanour that the officer showed at the time when he arrived at my house. And I just also, as well as Raywin Mullane's statement, there was another one sent in by a neighbour who I don't know very well, but his first name is Gerry. And another one by a woman who I'd met out of Tony Dog Walk, she also sent in a supporting statement. So I hope you're okay as well. But apart from that, Mr. Evans, you'll be glad to know, isn't still suffering too badly from his injury, because I've seen him walking up the hill with bags of groceries after being down to the supermarket. So he just don't believe that he couldn't attend the hearing because he was incapacitated. But I guess he's said all he needs to say, so that's fine. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trezada. I have two more questions, but if anyone else, I'll ask one of them now. And that is, maybe you didn't catch entirely what you just said, Brian, but did you consider it would have been worth your while having Raywin Mullane, is that how you pronounce your name? Or in any of these other parties who indicated support for Breaker to be at this hearing with you? Because you were entitled to have support people.
I just thought that their statements that would have hopefully been provided to the councillors would have been sufficient.
Okay, thank you. I've certainly read through their statements. My last question is, you have stated, and I'm quoting, that you believe Breaker would not have bitten Mr. Evans. There are two questions here. Actually, I've got three question marks. Do you stand by that as the first one? But before you have the opportunity to answer that, don't you think possibly that in the heat of the moment, in the midst of a dog fight, and the word frenzied was used by animal control people earlier, in the midst of a frenzied dog fight, that could have happened? Don't you think that even the nicest of dogs can do something out of character? Or in a heated attack, that it could have been Breaker that bit Mr. Evans?
Sure, I agree that's possible. But I just feel that because of where the complaint was standing in relation to my dog and what he was doing and his position to his dog, it is, all I've said was that it was just seemed more likely that he was bitten by his own dog. And I do accept that it's not entirely impossible. It could have been Breaker. Just more likely it was the complaint's dog.
Okay, thank you very much. I see there are no further questions. So what we will do, I'm suggesting we break for 15 minutes so we can have a cup of coffee or whatever. We will, we will resume. That'll just be the, I'm checking out with Officer Johnson here. We, it'll just be the councillors who, councillors and Dem Services people who return in 15 minutes. I'm not quite sure how we let everyone know once our deliberations have been finalized, but we will put in an appearance again once they have been finalized. You have a question, Liz?
I do. Are we not going into deliberations?
We will do, but it will be appropriate to have a.
You muted again there, Malcolm. You've kind of gone on and off and on, and now we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I was saying that some may wish to use the bathroom or have a hot drink or both. So.
I don't think we need 15 minutes, though. I'm just mindful that we've been on this one topic since 1:30. And it's now, it's now nearly quarter past three.
Okay, well. Put your hand up, a few, 15 minutes or 10 minutes? 10 minutes?
Five minutes.
Or five minutes?
Five minutes.
Well, if we make, no, we will make it five minutes, but that is sharp. Sharp, five minutes.
Eight minutes and made it 20 past. Oh, I love it.
No, no, look, yeah, 20 past is eight minutes.
Look at us compromising.
Okay, see you then. Decide, where's my gavel? Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trezada. We will appear at a later stage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have officers online somewhere, the animal control and?
Yes, we have. Shaun and Claire.
All right, okay. Well, we're back into it. We have spent a considerable, considerable time discussing this, and we are now going to put the motion. So Liz is going to put that. And we will have a seconder. And then we'll debate.
Okay. So I move, the recommendation is that we received the information. We note the evidence which form the basis for the classification, any steps taken. Am I reading the whole lot? Does that form the whole recommendation? Or can I just say that I move that we uphold the recommendation of the officers?
Right, and we have a seconder? Councillor O'Neill. Actually, Liz, you have the opportunity to speak at this point. Then we'll have a second to speak, and then we'll go into debate.
I do. Okay. Well, I'd just like to thank everybody for the time that they've put in to having this matter heard and for the process that we have participated in today. And I just wanted to support the officer's recommendation that the behaviour was menacing and that in order to safeguard the safety of the public, that Breaker will need to be muzzled in future when he's in a public place. And I'd like to thank my colleagues as well for the discussion.
Thank you, Liz. Councillor O'Neill, do you wish to speak at this point?
I think you just briefly to speak in support of upholding the officers' decision to conclude that the dog is menacing in this case and to acknowledge Mr. Trezada, Mr. Evans and Isabel, and of course, the two dogs, Breaker and George, for what I imagine would not be a very nice day on the event that it occurred and all of the due diligence that dog officers and other members of the community have done to kind of engage in this process and noting that this is a new process. And then lastly, to just kind of acknowledge points on both sides today about more things that we can do to better care for our animals and the way that we regulate them and behave. In the past, I've been, I'm a big dog-loving person. Most of my colleagues know that, as are the members of the committee. And I'm satisfied that the decision today will be for the best of the dog community. And hopefully, you know, with the muzzle and some more education around this, we won't be seeing too many more menacing dogs.
Okay, thank you for that. We will have opportunity for others to comment. I wish to say a few things at this point. I'll put my hand up, but I would like to thank Animal Control and Public Health for all the work that has gone into this and for the job that they do, the thankless efforts that they, the time and effort that they put in. I don't envy what they have to do and I wish they were more fully resourced. Obviously, we regret that this incident ever happened, and I hope if Mr. Evans is looking at this or subsequently sees it, that he is fully healed from both the injury physically and mentally. And it's just a, it's a pity that it ever happened and there were circumstances that if, yeah, it should not have happened. It did. I have given this a lot of thought and my initial expectation was that this would be a clear-cut case involving a not particularly nice dog. But in my view, it has not been a clear-cut case at all. And I, I don't feel personally that there has been sufficient evidence provided beyond this one unfortunate incident, and I'm not downplaying the extent of the injury, to substantiate the allegation that this is an aggressive dog deserving of the menacing classification. I personally don't believe he is and that he would be, he could be safely walked unmuzzled in the future. That is my view. And therefore, I will not be voting to uphold the menacing classification. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Councillor Conde.
Thank you. I guess I'd just like to start by thanking Animal Services and saying to the team who have been with us, thank you for answering all our questions with a lot of patience. We did ask you some really challenging questions today, and that's, that's not a situation I particularly like to be in, particularly in public. But I think it was important for Mr. Trezada to see that we were taking his request for review very seriously and that we were asking really challenging questions of our staff. And I want to thank you very much for all the answers that you gave us today. While I think it's shown that we found maybe a couple of places we could have done a little bit better and there's a learning opportunity perhaps around some of the paperwork. It's the first time we've had to do an appeal like this, and we recognise that you've also got resource and challenges. But any of those minor issues don't change the underlying decision that you have made, which we see as well, which is that while it is possible that it was George that bit Mr. Evans, on the balance of probabilities, it does seem like it was Breaker. And that, for me at least, it's an issue of kind of what's my least regrets going forward? And my least regrets is that a little bit of inconvenience to Breaker and the owner in terms of being muzzled in public versus the chance that another incident like this might happen. And just want to say to Mr. Trezada that I'm, you know, sorry that you felt that you felt the process didn't really hear you the first time, and that I hope that the amount of, we've certainly taken it very seriously, your appeal, when we were deliberating, a number of councillors talked about having lost a bit of sleep over this, which I definitely did last night as well, and a number of hours that we spent, you know, going over all of the. Um, and a number of hours that we spent, um, you know, going over all of the evidence. So I just wanted to say to Mr Tressida that we have taken this very seriously, even though, um, the decision that we're coming out with today is probably not the one that you would have liked to see. Um, and just thank you to everybody.
Thank you, councillor Conde. Anyone else wish to speak? Do we write a reply to Liz? Okay, on that basis, um, I'm looking for my little hand to put up or not put up, but anyway, let, let, let us vote. Um, the recommendation is that we uphold the menacing classification, so put your hand up, thumbs up or thumbs down. Okay. That is carried. Thank you very much. And we, meeting, we will close the meeting with the karakia. Councillor Conde will be reading the closing karakia for us.
Yes.